I'd like to make a change to the agenda, which would be the new G3, which bumps the rest of the agenda down. The new G3 is an executive session meeting. And so the next thing on the agenda is comments from citizens present. I don't see anybody. And then we have the Urban Renewal Meeting Minutes of January 22nd, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept them?
Madam Chair, I've got a couple of questions. On page three, I'm wondering why there's a third motion box that doesn't make sense. And then in the second paragraph of number three, it should be availability instead of the available. I'm not certain who prepared the minutes.
Those minutes were done back in January and I'll have to go back and double check.
Okay. The first motion box is to close the nominations. That makes sense. The second one's to approve Judy Casper as Vice Chair of the Urban Renewal Agency. That makes sense. But then the third motion box is to approve Judy Casper as Chair of the Urban Renewal Agency, when we already appointed Ms. Hinton. So that motion box just doesn't make any sense.
Okay. I'll check it. Remove it.
So would we hold the minutes then until the next meeting? Or do we just approve them with changes?
That's fine. Just pull the minutes.
You want them pulled? Okay. Kathy asked for them to be pulled. Okay. Any other comments to the minutes? Okay. We're holding them, so we'll go on to presentations, which I hear there are none. Okay. We don't have any hearings or public comment. And so let's move to G2, which is Urban Renewal Loan Committee Vacancy and Appointment. And I'd like to open the nominations to fill the vacancy on the Urban Renewal Loan Committee. So if anyone would like to make a nomination.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to appoint Councilwoman Hinton.
I second it.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
Thank you. And all those in favor of appointing myself to the Urban Renewal Committee?
Closing of the nomination.
Oh, sorry. I'm one ahead of myself. Okay.
Second discussion to close.
I'll get it.
I know.
Okay. So all those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, all those in favor of appointing myself to the Urban Renewal Loan Committee?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. The motion passes. Thank you. And now we've added a new agenda item, the new G3, which is executive session.
Your Honor, sorry. Who made the motion to appoint you?
I did.
Okay. Sorry.
And who seconded it?
Susan.
Okay. The Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602E, Real Property Transactions for the Urban Renewal RFEI Properties. And which allows the Urban Renewal to meet in an executive session.
Just the mechanics of this are we will recess regular session, go into executive session. You'll read that script in executive session and we'll return.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just would like clarification for the public, what RFEI means?
Request for Expressions of Interest Properties. It has to do with the agenda item G3.
Really? That's all I need.
Thank you. So we are in recess?
Going northwest or here?
Yeah, northwest, Tom.
Okay, we are back in session Monday, May 14th at 5:47 for the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. We are now to finish up G3, which was an executive session. And are there any actions, if any, based on the executive session?
Madam Chair, I'd move to authorize the city manager's staff and consultant to enter into an exclusive agreement to negotiate with respective developers.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we are moving on to the now new G4, which was G3, which is development of agency and city properties. Would you like to postpone this? Just the, oh, the projects update.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I got confused.
It's, it's.
We are moving past that number and on to the capital projects update.
Thank you. And then we also have a resolution on the agenda if there's time. So I'll probably move fairly quickly through the capital projects update. You do have the information in your packet. Mostly all projects are on track to finish by fiscal year for the projects that are under construction. And that includes the Rhodes End South 50th Street Pump Station. And it also includes the D-Lake Utility Undergrounding Project. For that project in particular, I know, you know, it's kind of front and center. We're hoping to complete it around the 15th of June, which will give us a little bit of cushion for the Summer Kite Festival, which is June 23rd. So, yes, a little cushion. The utility companies have been responsive and are hopping too, so we're feeling good about that date. And then Schooner Point Turnout in Cutler City, I'm sure you all have seen that, that did get paved last week. Public Works has done a great job managing these projects for us. And I don't think we'd have them this far along if it weren't for their help in that respect. Couple more projects in design are the Cutler Southwest Jetty Realignment Project. We expect that we'll be constructing that in the fall of this year. And there's a little sidewalk section in Cutler City to connect those two Highway 101 turnouts. And we'll pick up the design on that project after we get the permit for the Jetty Realignment Project. And then there's a section of sidewalk in front of the Robies Furniture Store in Cutler City. And that one is still with ODOT requested a permit with ODOT. And so as soon as we have that permit, we will be moving to construction, which will probably be after July 1st, so in the next fiscal year. And that is in your budgets for consideration. And I think that covers the capital projects updates. Are there any questions? This is pretty much it for our capital projects for this urban renewal district. So we don't anticipate seeing any new projects. It'll just be wrapping these up.
Any questions?
Look, Madam Chair, there were these couple other, the Cutler Bay Access, and are they not budgeted or?
Yeah, yeah, so the Cutler Bay Access is something that we talked about doing as we asked you all how you wanted to spend the remaining funds. And so far, your direction has been to use the remaining bond funds of the 2.975 million to do the utility undergrounding in D-Lake and then use any residual funds for the economic development toolbox. If there's a different decision made, I don't know how flexible that bond paperwork is, we can talk about that. But this Cutler Bay Access is basically from the Baywalk Schooner Point Turnout on Highway 101, this would connect that turnout down to the bay. So there's kind of a informal trail that's there where clambers and trimpers can walk down to the beach. And so this would be an idea that would connect that down to the bay. And we just don't know, because we've talked about it, but we don't know concept, we don't know design, we don't know cost. So we just kind of figured that that would be a city-initiated project rather than urban renewal. But it's up to you all to make those decisions. So, are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, one, just a comment, not a question. Allison, I know you, these projects get from urban renewal to public works. I would encourage someone, whether you or Public Works, keep the website current. I think that the one, because they're so visible, especially on Highway 101, and whenever a project stalls, I for one get a lot of questions, and I'm sure other counselors do, and it'd be helpful, even this a little bit helps as far as an update, why is it stalling and what's going to nudge it forward or something?
Okay.
Just, just so it has the appearance that we're, we know what's going on.
Got it.
It'd be helpful.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution UR 2018-01, a resolution authorizing and directing budget transfers for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, in the 2017-18 fiscal year budget. Ms. Bridges?
Oh, I was waiting, maybe there's a slip on my desk or something. Good evening. Just two small items on this budget resolution. The first item is in the Urban Renewal General Fund for $32,000 and $34,000. When we established the 1718 budget, we didn't budget anything for bond issuance costs. I really didn't have any idea how much that would be. And so this request is just to move that $32,000 from the capital reserve and that fund up into materials and services to cover that cost. And then the second item is, I'd just like to re-categorize, in the Property Rehab Fund, primarily the architect services and also a couple other items that are in the special payments, just to move those up into materials and services so that we have consistency with what we did in the 1617 year. So that's just moving from the special payment category to the materials and services category. And that amount is $15,000, so it doesn't change the budget or what we're spending the money on, just what we're calling it. And those are the only two items. Any questions?
Questions? Can I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve Resolution UR 2018-01, adopting the budget transfer for fiscal year 2017-18.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry.
We have a roll call on this one.
Oh, roll call on this one, because it's money.
Roll call, it's money.
Okay.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And we already took care of, I, the next agenda item is agency member comments.
If I may, I would just like to say thanks to Allison for, she's done on this and as we sunset these projects, it's, it's been, it's been real nice this last year having you in charge.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Any other members? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
See you back in four or five minutes.
Mics are off.